Hey guys, the mayor is saying, kind of keep it down, okay?
You're the troublemaker. What are you talking about, James?
Hi, Chris.
Hey, good evening.
Good evening, Chris.
Everyone looks great.
Official.
You don't have a tie.
I don't, but I have an undershirt. That's gotta count for something.
You can ask James where his tie is.
It's right here. This little zipper thingy is my tie.
Okay, do we have? There we go. All right. Good evening, everyone. We will call the meeting for April 5th of 2021 to order. This is a virtual meeting per Governor Inslee's emergency proclamation 20-05 and 20-28. And the stay safe, stay healthy. Because of that, the city is holding public meetings virtually at this time. City of Auburn Resolution Number 5581 designate City of Auburn meeting locations for all regular, special, and steady session meetings of the city council and of the committees, boards, and commissions of the city as virtual locations. All right, at this point, if you would please rise and join me in allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated. And Sean, if you will, please call roll.
Captain Mayor DeCoursey.
Excused.
Councilmember Baggett.
Here.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember J-Raj.
Here.
Councilmember Melanga.
Excused.
Councilmember Stern.
Here.
Councilmember Trout Manuel.
Here.
All right, thank you. And counsel tonight, excuse me, I know your agendas say three proclamations, but we will have four proclamations this evening. The first one is for Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and we do have a guest with us this evening, Laurel Redden. She will receive the proclamation after I am finished reading it, and I believe Laurel will have a few words to say for us. So let me begin with the proclamation. Whereas in Washington State, 45% of women and 22% of men report having experienced sexual violence in their lifetime, and 7,152 adults and children received specialized assistance from organizations with programming for sexual assault victims in 2020. And whereas rape is among the most underreported crimes for reasons that include victims' fear of being disbelieved or further traumatized within systems designed to support them. Additional barriers such as language, immigration status, gender bias, and systemic racism further oppress and silence victims. And whereas individual and community impacts of sexual violence are rooted in and compounded by racial, gender, sexual orientation, and other forms of oppression. Black, indigenous, and other people of color, people living in poverty, LGBTQ people, elders, people with disabilities, and other people targeted by oppression are affected by sexual violence in significant and complex ways. And whereas statewide, 29% of the survivors who were supported by a community sexual assault organization identified as black, indigenous, and people of color in 2019. Of those identifying ethnicity, 21% identified as Latinx and Hispanic. Whereas King County is home to many organizations that provide culturally and linguistically specific services for survivors from various racial, ethnic, faith, and cultural communities, survivors who are immigrants and refugees, survivors who are LGBTQ, and survivors with disabilities. These culturally specific services are critical to effectively respond to the specific needs and barriers many survivors face. And whereas negative impacts of sexual violence trauma on women, men, children, and youth include fear, concern for safety, symptoms of post-traumatic stress disorder, injury, and missed work or school. And whereas working together as a community, we can alleviate the trauma of sexual violence by ensuring supportive resources are available to all survivors while standing up to harmful attitudes and behaviors that contribute to sexual assault. Now therefore, I Nancy Backus, Mayor of the City of Auburn, do hereby proclaim April 2021 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month in the City of Auburn, and urge all community members to join advocates and communities throughout King County in taking action to prevent sexual violence by standing with survivors. Together, we commit to a safer future for all children, young people, adults, and families in our community dated this 5th day of April 2021. And Laurel, thank you for joining us this evening. If you would like to say a few words, we would be honored to hear from you.
Thank you, Mayor Backus, and thank you, members of the council. We truly sincerely appreciate the fact that Auburn is once again proclaiming April as Sexual Assault Awareness Month. You are taking a leadership position, and we believe it takes everyone to end sexual violence, just as sexual violence affects everyone in our community. Just to let you know that CASEARC is an organization that serves all of King County, but the south part of the county comprises much of our client base and half of those that we serve are children. And that's something that not many people realize, and we just want to call that out because that is an important constituency of our client base. I know that families and adults who are impacted by sexual assault will be looking at the city and thanking it for its leadership. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Laurel, and we will ensure that you get a copy of the proclamation.
Thank you.
Thank you. And next this evening is Sikh Heritage Day. Whereas Sikhism is a religion founded in the Punjab region of South Asia over five centuries ago and introduced to the United States in the 19th century. And whereas Sikhism is the fifth largest world religion with approximately 25 million adherents from diverse backgrounds throughout the world, including 500,000 adherents in the United States. And whereas Sikhs in the United States pursue diverse professions and walks of life, making rich contributions to the economic vibrancy of the United States as farmers, engineers, doctors, scientists, and business owners. And whereas Bisakhi is the is one of the most religiously significant days in Sikh history commemorating the creation of the Kalsa, a fellowship of devout Sikhs by Guru Gobind Singh in 1699. And whereas today, the City of Auburn seeks to recognize the diversity of its community and afford all residents the opportunities to better understand, recognize, and appreciate the rich history and share experiences. And now therefore, I Nancy Backus, Mayor of Auburn, do hereby proclaim April 14th, 2021, as Sikh Heritage Day in the City of Auburn, and we wish our Sikh American community a very joyous Bisakhi dated this 5th day of April 2021. And counsel, as you may recall, sometimes we do have councilmember Satwinder Kar from Kent and her son joining us to receive the proclamation. I did let her know that we were proclaiming this this evening, and we will get her a copy of that of the proclamation as well. Next is proclamation for our public safety telecommuters, telecommunications, excuse me. Whereas the federal government's standard occupational classification system, SOCS, classifies workers into occupational categories for statistical purposes based upon the nature of the work performed, and in some cases, based upon the skills, education, or training needed to perform the work. Whereas America's 911 Public Safety Telecommunicators, PST, are incorrectly categorized in the SOCS as an office, an administrative support occupation, a category which includes secretarial staff and clerical workers. And whereas classifying PSTs as protective service occupations alongside police, firefighters, security guards, lifeguards, and others whose job it is to protect our communities would better reflect the work they perform and align the SOCS with related classification systems. Whereas on March 7th, 2019, the 911 Saves Act, a bipartisan bill to reclassify 911 PSTs to protective service occupants, has stalled in the legislative process. And whereas nine states currently consider 911 PSTs as first responders, and the Washington State 911 community is actively working to introduce similar legislation in Olympia. And whereas the City of Auburn is served by Valley Communications Center 911, known as ValleyCom 911, whose PSTs handle over 616,000 phone calls and over 472,000 dispatchable calls for a service year. ValleyCom 911 PSTs are highly trained professionals who work under a uniquely stressful environment. ValleyCom 911 PSTs are the first of the first responders, providing lifesaving pre-arrival instructions, triage, mediation, de-escalation, and a calm presence on the telephone and radio that is focused on both responders and public safety. And whereas recognizing our 911 PSTs for the critical role in emergency response cannot and should not wait for the passage of the 911 Saves Act, and believes that these local actions will help support and further similar legislation that 911 PSTs deserve. And now therefore, I Nancy Backus, Mayor of the City of Auburn, do hereby proclaim that the 911 Public Safety Telecommunicators at Valley Communications Center 911 are recognized and elevated to the status of first responders who serve our community dated this 5th day of April 2021. Counsel, our 911 operators do a tremendous job, as you know, in our community, and I do hope that we are able to get that legislation passed that would that would reclass them into more appropriate status. I do have one final proclamation this evening, and it's for Public Health Week. Whereas making communities safe and healthy is the foundational work of public health and public health professionals. And whereas public health services include food safety, epidemiology, chronic disease, and acute injury prevention, emergency medical services, environmental health, and more. And whereas these critical services are delivered by public health professionals dedicated to protecting and improving the health and well-being of their community, so all communities thrive. And whereas Public Health Seattle and King County was established in 1951 when the Seattle Department of Health and the King County Department of Health merged. And whereas Public Health Seattle and King County is guided by principles of equity and social justice and works to eliminate health disparities in King County. And whereas Public Health Seattle and King County is recognized as a national leader in their work to develop the FLASH curriculum, to establish and innovate secure medicine return program, and for having the second lowest COVID infection rates for an urban county. And whereas the COVID-19 pandemic has highlighted the critical importance of accessible and quality public health services. And whereas public health agencies have been the cornerstones of their response to the COVID-19 pandemic, including providing testing, contact tracing, and vaccination. And whereas this year commemorates the 26th Annual Celebration of Public Health Week, and whereas this year's theme of building bridges to better health recognizes that while we are physically distanced, it is more important than ever to come together. Now therefore, I Nancy Backus, Mayor of the City of Auburn, do hereby proclaim April 5th through the 11th of 2021 as Public Health Week in the City of Auburn, and urge all community members to join me in thanking the public health professionals who dedicate themselves to making King County a safe and healthy community dated this 5th day of April 2021. All very important proclamations tonight, counsel, and thank you for thank you for your grace in allowing me to read all of them. All right, today we will move on to appointments. We have one appointment to the Transportation Advisory Board. City Council to confirm the appointment of Christian Faltenberger to the Transportation Advisory Board, serving as the Auburn Chamber of Commerce representative for a three-year term to expire December 31st, 2023. Do we have a motion? Councilmember Trout Manuel.
I make a motion to accept the appointment of Christopher Berlinberger to the Transportation Advisory Board.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Councilmember Brown.
I will second that motion, Your Honor.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor of the appointment of Christian Faltenberger to the Transportation Advisory Board for a term that will expire December 31st, 2023, please say aye. All opposed, please say no. Passes. Sean, I don't believe we have any agenda modifications this evening. Is that correct?
No, Your Honor.
Thank you. We have no new business this evening. We have no public hearing scheduled for this evening. We will move to audience participation. This is the place on the agenda where the public is invited to speak to the city council on any issue. Right now, as you are aware, we are doing virtual participation. Participants can submit written comments via mail, fax, or email. All written comments must be received prior to 5:00 PM on the date of the scheduled meeting and must be 350 words or less. Please mail comments to City of Auburn. Attention, Sean Campbell, City Clerk, 25 West Main Street, Auburn, Washington, 98001. Please fax comments to Attention, Sean Campbell, City Clerk with the fax number of 253-804-3116. Or you may email comments to publiccomment@auburnlaw.gov. Councilmember Trout Manuel, did you have a question or a comment? I'm sorry, I didn't realize. Okay, if you just want to, thank you. I'm sorry.
No, I just lowered, I just lowered my hand.
Great, thank you. I just didn't want to miss an opportunity if you had a question. Thank you. All right, do we have any correspondence this evening, Sean?
Yes, Your Honor. Allison Eisner, Gretchen Marshall, Lomasee Marshall, Chroma Williams, Serena Porward Rodriguez, Gina Custer, Kelly Curley, Robin Kurak, Ray Shaw Reedy, Brienne Schuster, Cassie Dallas, Reverend Bill, Carlin Hackett, and Kathleen Nyden provided comments. Opposing Ordinance 6817. Jeff Anderson expressed concerns about Ordinance 6815. And Bob Zerwin expressed concerns about propane safety.
Thank you. And counsel, I believe you have received all copies of public comment at this point. All right, we have no correspondence this evening. We will move to council ad hoc committee reports. Council ad hoc committee chairs may report on the status of their ad hoc council committee's progress on assigned tasks and may give their recommendations to the city council, if any. And we now have two ad hoc committees. The first is finance with the chair being Councilmember Baggett. Do you have a report?
Yes, Your Honor, thank you. The council ad hoc finance committee, consisting of councilmembers, councilmember J-Raj and myself, reviewed 48 pages of claims vouchers totaling $3.6 million, and they were dated April 5th, 2021. The committee also reviewed payroll vouchers for the period March 10th, 2021, through, I believe, let's see, yes, March 30th, 2021, in the amount of $2.8 million. Upon completion of our review, the committee recommends council approval of these vouchers. Thank you.
Thank you. And we also have an ad hoc committee for grocery worker hazard pay. That committee is made up of the Chair, Deputy Mayor DeCoursey, and councilmembers Brown and J-Raj. Since Deputy Mayor DeCoursey is not with us this evening, Councilmember Brown or J-Raj, do you have anything to report? Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. You'd think a year in, a person would figure out the mute button. Anyway, thank you for the opportunity to report. I want to thank Councilmember J-Raj and Deputy Mayor DeCoursey, who met with Kendra on Friday. We reviewed information that was provided by the city, the research that was done by Kendra, as well as a legal memo that I had asked Antoinette to distribute to the two other members of the committee. And so we have another meeting set up for a week from this Friday, actually, it's this Friday at 7:00 PM. So you have a dedicated ad hoc committee that will be meeting on Friday night at 7:00 PM.
Thank you very much.
Word of honor.
Thank you very much, and thank you for volunteering to be on the committee. Right, we will move to the consent agenda. All matters listed on the consent agenda are considered by the city council to be routine and will be enacted by one motion in the form listed. Do we have a motion? Councilmember Baggett.
Thank you, Your Honor. I move to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. Councilmember Brown.
I would second that motion, Your Honor.
Thank you, Councilmember Baggett.
Thank you. The consent agenda consists of four items tonight. We have the minutes of the March 15th, 2021 regular council meeting, the minutes of the March 22nd, 2021, and the March 29th, 2021 study sessions, and the claims vouchers and the payroll vouchers, which I just reviewed.
Thank you very much. Counsel, do you have any questions or comments about the consent agenda? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor of the consent agenda, please unmute and say aye.
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 All opposed, please say no. Consent agenda passes. We have no unfinished business this evening, so we will move to ordinances. Ordinance Number 6815, and ordinance amending ordinance number 6794, the 2021-2022 biennial operating budget ordinance, and ordinance number 6796, the 2021-2022 biennial capital budget, authorizing amendment to the City of Auburn 2021-2022 budget as set forth in Schedule A and Schedule B. Do we have a motion? Do we have a motion? Councilmember Sterns.
Thank you, Your Honor. Excuse me. The ordinance and budget amendment, number one, will increase the 2021 budget to account for certain programs.
Councilmember Stern? Oh, we need a motion.
Oh, I will move to adopt ordinance number 6815.
Thank you. And Councilmember Trout Manuel?
I second that.
Thank you. And Councilmember Sterns, thank you for being so interested in this. If you would like to like to explain the motion, the ordinance, that would be wonderful.
Great, yes, I will continue my endeavors. So the budget amendment will increase the 2021 budget to account for certain programs that were budgeted in 2020 but not completed. It will also increase the budget for existing programs, increase the budget for new programs, account for new grant revenue, and corresponding program expenditures, and finally, increase the FTE authority from 0.6 to 0.75 for one multimedia position.
Thank you. Counsel, are there any questions or comments about ordinance number 6815? Right? All those in favor of ordinance 6815, please unmute and say aye.
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 All opposed, please say no. The ordinance passes. We will move to resolutions. We have one resolution this evening. Resolution Number 5584, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement between the City of Auburn and Case and Grove for public defense services. Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, Your Honor. I would like to move adoption of Resolution Number 5584.
Thank you. Councilmember J-Raj?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to second that motion, please.
Thank you. Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, Your Honor. The city has been contracting with Case and Grove Law Offices for Public Defense Services since 2013, as required by the law. This new contract is essentially an extension of the original contract and subsequent addendums.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from counsel? Hearing none. If you would please unmute. All those in favor of Resolution Number 5584, please say aye.
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 All opposed, please say no. Passes. Right, we will move to mayor and councilmember reports. At this time, the mayor and city council may report on significant items associated with their appointed position on federal, state, regional, and local organizations. And tonight, we will begin with Councilmember Trout Manuel.
I only have one report to chair, and that's with my Regional Law and Justice Sound District Association caucus meeting. We met on Friday at noon, and we really didn't have that much to discuss. We shared about what we're doing in our city when it comes to police reform. So I did share a little bit about a flyer that Chief O'Neill shared with me, and it has what they the the things that they have been doing and promoting in our city in their police department, which was all really good. Then we talked about how we can do more when we go to the King County Regional Law and Justice Committee because we hardly ever get a chance to speak up and share about what our cities are doing. So we all voted on that. Starting next month, we are going to ask the King County Regional Law and Justice to give us council members a little spot where we can each speak up and share about what we're doing in our city. So that was a plus, and that's about all that we covered. Our meeting is next month on the same date, on Friday of May. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Councilmember Baggett.
Thank you, Your Honor. Many of the folks out there have heard that me talk about the Regional Transit Committee. This is for King County, and this committee actually reports to the King County Council, and is made up of several representatives from the cities within the Puget Sound area. within the Puget Sound area. Uh, we will be having a meeting this Friday, uh, of the South King County, uh, group, which really will consist of, uh, myself representing Auburn, uh, Renton, uh, Ryan McGurven, King County Councilmember Dave Up the Grove, and Kent City Council President Tony Troutner. Now, this is an interim meeting to kind of, uh, get our ducks all in a row relative to supporting the South King County Transit. Uh, and we all know that the south end of King County has been, uh, significantly underserved for years. And there are four scenarios that are currently, uh, uh, on the docket of the RTC. And, uh, uh, of those four scenarios, uh, the number two and the number four, uh, create equity. And those two, of those two, number four, the scenario, uh, will allow more transit to come to our South King County area. Uh, so we're actually building a case here. Uh, the intent here is certainly not to, uh, undermine any of the other, uh, regions of, of King County that also have needs as well. But we would like to bring a balance, if we could, so that the South King County can come up to par with the other areas of the region. And, uh, so this meeting that we're having on Friday will be, like I mentioned, uh, preparing talking points and things of that nature. I also want to give a shout out to, uh, uh, our staff members, uh, especially, uh, Cecile Malik and, uh, April from, uh, Kent, and, uh, Vanji from Renton, uh, because they have done a tremendous amount of late work to put the, uh, various talking points together. So then when we do convene with the regular RTC, uh, group, then we will be able to, uh, support our position more strongly. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Baggett. Councilmember Brown, who, by the way, happy birthday, my friend. What a way to spend your birthday.
Thank you. It's just with all my very closest allies here. Uh, no report tonight, Mayor, uh, other than the fact that I had a very nice birthday today.
Excellent. Thank you. Councilmember Sterns.
Um, thank you, Your Honor. Uh, just a couple of things. I, I was able to attend a briefing from the National League of Cities on the American Rescue Plan. And they, they've been doing sort of weekly updates. Um, so they're, they're well worth your time if you can attend them. Um, but as, as you may know, the American Rescue Plan was signed into law last month, and included is 65 billions of, of direct, um, and, and flexible funding for, um, cities in the US, including Auburn. Uh, the Treasury Department is charged with reading the rules. So there's not yet a specific amount that we know for Auburn. Um, but those rules are, uh, supposed to be done probably in early May. So we should have a pretty good idea. And, um, you know, just, just something that that's really, um, important for our city. And then secondly, um, last week, I attended a briefing on the Clean Water Plan, or King County's Clean Water Plan, for elected officials, and, uh, uh, I believe Councilmember Baggett was there as well, and it was just sort of to get people off the ground in terms of understanding, um, what the resources are and, and what the, uh, things like, you know, reducing nutrients, um, that, what the big issues are coming up. And, uh, we'll, we'll continue to have more workshops, and more plans, and more meetings, um, almost on a weekly basis. So that, that's what I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sterns. Councilmember Jay Raj.
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, I don't have anything for this evening at this point.
All right. Well, I will share with you a few quick things, and then some of you may want to get to the, finals of the NCAA tournament. Some of you may be taping it, so, um, I will start out with Monday, May, or excuse me, March 15th, as well as last Monday, the 29th. I am part of the Sound Transit. It's a subcommittee on realignment, and I am representing South King County in that realignment committee. Once the costs for ST3 projects came to a point of being, um, unaffordable, given the cost increases for property acquisition and materials, it is the requirement of the agency to provide a realignment plan that will determine some type of prioritization for projects that have not yet begun. And so we are meeting on, uh, every week or every two weeks to look at different scenarios on how we can best serve this region and the expansion of Link Light Rail, but also portions of Sound Transit 2 that are directly impacting the cities of Auburn, Kent, and Sumner, that being parking garages that were promised in ST2 but have yet to be delivered even in ST3. So just want you all to know that I am on those calls representing South King County and trying to ensure that the projects that have been promised for this region in South King and the subregion will be delivered and that they will be prioritized. So if any of you have any questions on any of that, please feel free to let me know, and I will make sure to voice those concerns. On Friday, February, uh, excuse me, I'm not getting the months right this evening. I'm going from May to February. On March 26th, there was a special regional policy committee. And some of you may know, but there are certain things that must go through the regional policy committee before they can go to the King County Council to be voted on. That's part of the charter, and I believe the Regional Transit Committee is one of those committees as well. And as many of you may be familiar, several years ago, the King County, uh, had a ballot measure called Best Starts for Kids. The City of Auburn was supportive of, of that ballot measure, and indeed, there have been many amazing things that have been provided, services provided for youth in our community as well as throughout King County. That ballot measure is coming to an end, and so it is time for renewal. The first ballot measure was voted on at 14 cents per thousand dollars of assessed value. And then over the seven years, six or seven years of time, that amount per thousand is reduced due to that 1%, right? The, the caps. And so currently, the amount that is, that is taxed is 11 and a half cents per thousand dollars. The new proposed replacement BSK levy is for 19 cents per thousand. That is a 72% increase. And we were reviewing the, uh, the components of BSK, and while it is an incredibly good plan, the initial evaluation of 19 cents per thousand was reevaluated and determined that that would, that would raise an additional 60 million over what was necessary for the implementation of the new ballot measure. And so I asked, I made a motion on the floor to reduce the per thousand amount to 17.6 cents per thousand. That would, in essence, eliminate that 60 million dollars that was above what was necessary for, for the renewal. I made the motion, and the Chair of the Committee and our King County Councilmember Pete Von Reichbauer seconded and supported that measure, that motion. Unfortunately, other members of the King County Council, the Seattle City Council, and some of our SCA, Sound Cities Association, members, did not. And so it passed through committee at the 19 cents per thousand dollars of assessed value. In a day and age where there is no tax that some government officials, politicians, if you will, don't like, uh, it was my goal to prove to people that we do not take more than we need. Sadly, that was not to be the case. So, uh, I, I did end up supporting the measure moving forward to King County Council for their approval at the 19 cents when my motion did not pass. Just wanted you to be aware that we are trying to be mindful of the dollars that our residents are taxed. Uh, later that evening, though, I did have a little bit of fun. The Parks Department, trying to ensure safe social distancing but fun for Easter, had an event called Peter Cotton Trail. And on Friday evening at Les Gove, it was with our special population participants, and there were paper bunnies that were hidden all around Les Gove. And there was a challenge for those who were participating to find every one of the bunnies. And it was a lot of fun to see some of our special population come out and be able to enjoy the nice, fresh air and do something that was fun and see some of their friends again. So I thank our Parks Department for the great work that they do in that regard. And then this past Friday, April 2nd, I was asked to give an interview at, uh, Auburn Multi-Care in the hospital, because the hospital, while not always having been multi-care, the hospital itself is celebrating its 100th birthday. And so I was there to share, uh, words of congratulations from the City of Auburn and do a small interview on how the partnership between the hospital and our community is one that should be valued and continued. So that was a lot of fun, and, uh, just want to give you a reminder that on Thursday, April 8th of this week, we do have at 6:00 PM the Youth Town Hall, and hope that you can all join. It is out on social media. So hopefully, we will have lots of people to come and listen to, uh, two of our junior city council members, Wayland Menzia and Jonathan Malanga, as Jonathan is the facilitator, and Wayland is on the panel with myself, and Auburn School District Superintendent Alan Spicciotti, and, uh, and I believe Isaiah Johnson will be there as well to talk about issues of importance and significance to the youth in our community. So with that, I do not believe we have any need for an executive session tonight. So council, thank you very much. We are adjourned.
Happy birthday again, Larry.